Thank you. So it is six thirteen and we are calling this meeting of the Mount Vernon School Board to order. We have a public input time, one of two scheduled right away. So we will open up the floor to the public if we have any public comments. Thank you. Thanks for being here. We're going to pop right into our third grade presentation. So we have grade three students and teachers presenting a demo link of a third grade. Of a third grader.
Shut this door. So good evening, everyone. Our third grade presentation is virtual tonight. As you probably know, we're in a pair of conferences. So Jan Natty and Sherry Hall are our third grade teachers. Third grade is, I like to term it the uppers of the lowers. Our third graders are just about to make the jump across the hall over here. And so we've been excited this year, Jan and Sherry and I, to sort of look at how can we make them some leaders in our, in our lower hallway, give them some responsibilities. And we've been having some fun with that. This is really a taste of third grade. We did that with fifth grade, kind of gives you a look at excuse me, math literacy. Excuse me, math and literacy for third grade. We have some students and things like that. I think it'll speak for itself. I will tell you the volume is a little low on this, so hopefully you can hear it. And if not, I can use my computer volume and try to make that work. So without further ado, thank you to Jan and Sherry, our third grade presentation.
Hello, my name is Andrea and I want to tell you about the new workshop and then the workshop. I love being on tech people. Have new workshops and ready workshops in our day. In third day, we have four different units. Our first unit is one to be in the first day and we write our personal narrative. And I'm telling you, we do not just contact the parent or other templates. We start, you know, we do tipsy books with a focus on task. We write in a community. We think that we are watching everything. We need to put it on tipsy books test and write around the book.
Hello, my name is Sophia and the best part is very good reading and I like that. I want to tell you about foundation. Foundation is a circle that teaches foundational on in third grade, identify parts of words as base, such preface, subject and sentence. Two words. Identify all six syllables. Like play our phone, dial constantly, open our phone cell, telegraph and ask my elderly. We study the instructions to know where we also identify John's parents for reading in the morning.
So my name is Andrea and I want to tell you about that. The bridge map addresses district language in the in the language we use and it has a word plant. We deal with the understanding of context. So I have a bit of the unusual group solve complex problems. Do you remember more? What problems that we set are tied to solve.
Hello, my name is Asha and I think about a good break. This time I want to tell you about this a lot about you what is I. I made sure you guys that I are able to add some food of life out of flower his song for me guys. These lessons we have in the unit through the video and activity further of our understanding.
So my name is Andrea. I want to tell you that. I'm actually first name, I'm from New York and the name, I'm from New York. I'm from New York and I'm from New York. But today we will come in from New York. My favorite is practice with eight.
Hi, I'm Andrea and I'm back. Thank you for our forward for watching with all of our guests. You are welcome to come to visit us, teaching, do you like it? Oh, no, no, no. You say yes, I will. I'm gonna wait. Boy, would that be great. He comes back when he's in life, um, doing. Hi, nice.
So I apologize about the sound on there. Literally tech difficulties right up the last minute here, but. So like I say, third grade, we started getting into, very familiar with Bridges Math, but we started getting into that pivot between learning to read, reading to learn. A little bit is happening in third grade and some of those content areas and Sherry is new this year to us in, in third grade, doing, doing a great job, familiar face to some of you. And it's been, it's been a good year, solid team there. And we're excited, we're excited for the, the year and the Bridges Math program is going very well in third grade. As you saw, there's different components that you've heard about and familiar with, but it is fun to see it in action. So. Could you hear it? Yeah, I can send you the link to, yeah, I was reading.
I caught the spam comment.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, she likes.
I did pick up on. If you get a little close access and snap. Yeah.
It really does seem to be a lot of excitement about what they're learning. I mean, you can see that on their faces, even though they're very focused on what they were reading, which is fabulous. But I love that they're so willing to interact and engage. And I think that's just delightful at such a young age that they are, are open to doing that. So kudos to the staff and their parents as well for, you know, fostering that in those young people. It's great. So, okay. Any other questions? Yeah, we always love the snapshot. So big thank you to, to the third grade teachers and the third grade students who shared. My friends, we are on to our consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda this evening. We have the draft minutes from October sixth. We have our facilities update, the principal's report, both for M V B S and A M S, and we have some unanticipated revenue of five hundred dollars, I believe, from the P T A. So we have any discussion on those items or do you have a motion to accept those items as?
I'll make a motion to accept. I don't have anything. I'll suck.
Okay, so if you're in no discussion, we can just take a few of them in favor. Great, thank you very much. And I always appreciate the principal's report. I think you're a secret of that. I think it's really, it's a beautiful way to capture what's happening here. And Tom, I appreciate the time that you've put into that. You noticed that our numbers went up a tiny bit. That that was interesting. Still feeling good about where we're at.
Yeah. So actually those numbers, I think I put a little asterisk there. We've had five new registrations the past week. So pretty, pretty unusual actually to have that. It's not one family, I'll tell you. And so it's, it's a few different families moving in new to Mount Vernon, homeschool, kind of a little bit there. So it's great to have those, those kids in the school. They're off to a good start and all the five have started yet, but yeah, so.
Across grades or is?
Cross grades. Yeah, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, one's in my daughter's class. She's pretty excited about it. So you know.
Yeah, I can't go into specifics names, but. Yeah.
It's really wonderful. And I appreciate the the A M S principal's report as well. It's always really good to see what's happening down there and certainly, you know, seeing how the kids are integrating. It is just, it's, it's nice to see that. I appreciate the fact that they were able to go to the environmental camp. That's pretty cool. Anyone have any questions?
And we have Kristen here tonight. So she's here for our other agenda item. I'm not sure if everyone knew, you want to put your name. Not on our new principal at A M S. We're thrilled to have her on board with us. And we thought it would be nice for you to meet her. Since you have an agenda topic, I invited her and so if you have anything for the principal's report too, or she is here.
Yes, so we're still principals in Portland.
Yes, yeah.
And thank you for breaking out some Mount Vernon numbers there. I think it does help us to see what, what our population is. And it is a rare opportunity for us to have the A M S principal here. So that anybody have. Just means we love you.
Right. I tried to put pictures in there.
Yes, so good. Was there anything that you wanted to call out and highlight from that?
Um, I, I think one of the, the nice things, and again, it, it kind of goes a little bit with my transition report as well, is just the piece of being able to have everybody at the dance. It was really exciting to see some of the kids reconnecting from their faces. Some of the Amherst and Mount Vernon students know each other through sports or boy scouts or girl scouts and stuff like that. So you could hear the kids being, I remember you, I know you. And it was nice to see some of those connections. You know, just going into a lot of those, I have a sixth grader myself personally, and so she's aware of some of the other sixth graders that are from Mount Vernon. And you can just overhear in line kids reconnecting. And it was nice to see.
It's nice. It's lovely. That actually is a great segue into that next piece. So we can transition seamlessly.
Yep.
Into that if you are.
Yeah.
I'll kind of turn the floor over to you if you want to meet us all.
Great. No problem. Yeah. So I wanted to just sort of follow up with you, just given the tuition agreement and and some of my, some of my friends at the S A U have seen that firsthand. People just say room this number. And I'm like, what room is that? Right? Yeah. So for me, you know, I, I now I've got it, but I could understand how that would be daunting. In the same way for many of us, and you had from middle school or junior high to high school. How scary was that? You know, I never seen you saying there was a pool on the fourth floor. You know, and, and so that, that is daunting, especially coming from this kind of this model here. So building was a big one. And so I think about, you know, what else? And I'll talk more about next steps, but I think about what else we could do to familiarize students with the building and make it a little maybe less intimidating. Peers, many students said, hope there'd be more students from Mount Vernon in their individual core classes. I know our guidance team works really hard to try to make sure that we're honoring, you know, what kids need academically, what they need socially and emotionally, but that's definitely something that we continue to work on to make sure that students from Mount Vernon have familiar faces in their, in their core classes or on their teams. Really in seventh and eighth grade, there's only two teams. So you're either here or here. And then within those teams, you know, they go to four, four classes. So it's not a lot. They're not super spread out, but I think if we can try to add to some of those connections, that would be helpful for them. Teachers and staff, I think going, you know, going to the four teachers is something that's our sixth graders worry about too. And so that's a big shift for everybody. So, but that was something that came out loud and clear from students as well. And even, you know, integrated arts and world language and going off, you know, again, going all over the building, multiple teachers, they might see anywhere from seven to eight teachers a day, depending on their schedule. So that is something that is, you know, just noted as well. The other thing is students wish they had more opportunities to come see the school and get to know the building. I think the fear of the unknown was a big one for them, not knowing what the Amherst kid would be like, not knowing what the teachers would be like, not knowing, you know, not knowing what the experience was truly like. And they voiced wanting the seventh grade, seventh grade students who go to Amherst Middle School, who are from Mount Vernon to come speak to them here. So I know that there were tours and, and that whole piece, but they also, they're like, can they come back and visit us and tell us what it's really like at A M S? So that is something that, you know, I would be up for, see if we can organize to do that as well. So and then I added, like I said, additional transition notes and updates for the ecology school. We were able to make up that spring week. Again, that's a shared experience for those students. And so they were able to attend in, in seventh grade. And I think that's a really good, right off the bat bonding experience in the fall. So that was, that was kind of nice and, and maybe helped us in, in that adjustment. And then the dance, obviously, we were able to gather at the dance, which was awesome, which was a lot of fun. And Mr. Blacklighter made an appearance, which was lovely. He helped.
It's been a while.
Yeah. I didn't see you do the pine eye Joe and I was going to.
You missed that too.
At the next dance, he'll be doing the pine eye Joe. Um, but you know, overall, like I said, next steps, we're looking to continue to meet regularly, you know, as a leadership team, we meet regularly. I see, I get to see Tom every Monday. We connect virtually as well to just talk about what's going on, even when things, you know, things like when we talk about responsive classroom, and I know that's third grade, but we're doing that all the way up to sixth grade. It really up to eighth grade, but we're doing those morning meetings through sixth grade, out bounce ideas. I'll say, hey, my teacher's asking me about this. What are you doing there? And I talked to, you know, I even, I talked to Kathleen Daleman. She's, well, what are you doing there? Because I want to create that shared experience and a common experience for their students coming into A M S. Planning for lessons, I work with Christine regularly. We talk curriculum. She has a great finger on the pulse of exactly what's going on in, in all the buildings as well. And so being able to have opportunities to gather, talk about what those shared curriculum experiences are, whether it be college, you school or, or beyond that, you know, we'll, we'll be working on planning those things. And then the transition process, that planning for that, it's crazy to think we're already thinking about next school year. I mean, obviously we are in the budget. But looking at dates for the transition process, which really kind of starts in February, March, those dates start. Looking at with that with my guidance team and, and, you know, also Mount Vernon and, and Tom to talk about what some of those activities should look like and how we can adapt those based on the feedback we got from the students this fall. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Hopefully we can, we're looking at, you know, getting some more activities throughout the school year where we can have Mount Vernon students join us. Because that was such a, such a fun, fun evening, a very well attended evening. I think we had almost five hundred students. We have, yeah, it, it was, it was a pretty big deal. So yeah, we're really excited about that. And of course, open to your feedback or comments or thoughts at any point.
Yeah, thank you so much. Open it up. Before if you have any questions, comments.
So I do have a quick question. So I was on the other side of former Amherst resident with Mount Vernon. Kids come in here and my kids talking about when you play football and everything. So anything you've noticed or anything unique or any challenges you integrate in Mount Vernon, it's in with the general population out Amherst? Anything you picked up where nothing, I mean, the kids are kids, so I wouldn't expect any or anything, but.
The general feedback we've had from teachers is that, you know, our Mount Vernon students are coming from an elementary environment where the other Amherst students have had a little bit more of a middle school environment, even though that's stemming in these models, the same, they're in the middle school building. So it just feels different. I think also with Mount Vernon having such small class sizes, they get such individualized support that when they go to A M S, the class sizes are a little bit bigger and they kind of accept some of that individual attention where they're not as independent as their Amherst peers is the feedback that we've gotten from the teachers. And that's something for us to talk about and to work on. And not that we don't want to take some of that individual, individualized attention away. Some of the, the expectations might need to increase for fifth and sixth grade here, just to kind of, you know, set them up for success in seventh and eighth grade.
What might that look like here? I mean, you still have the environment. So I wonder how would you?
Yeah, it's more the level of rigor and the level of expectations. And I think because and I, and I, I can speak a little from personal experience. I was a sixth grade teacher in an elementary school. It was a K six school, just like this, about the same size. And this was back in New Jersey. And then I went to a middle, so it was a K eight school, but it was like a middle school within the, you know, the, the larger K eight school. And it was fascinating to see like I would assign homework and get pushed back from, and this was just my experience, not the same necessarily here. I get pushed back from families, like you gave my child too much homework. They're still in elementary school. And when I was in the middle school, it was I'm on the home, why didn't you give them homework over the weekend? So it was just a very interesting difference when I went from being in an elementary school teaching to a middle school. So I think that sometimes it's just more of the, hey, they're still in elementary schools kind of mindset. Both teachers as well as families to, they're in middle school now, kind of expectations. So I think, you know, we, we've talked about do we get the sixth grade, sixth and seventh grade, and maybe even fifth grade too, teachers together across both schools and really have that conversation. Well, what does your class look like? What are your level of expectations? Even though our curriculum is the same, I think that sometimes you know, would, if you have a smaller class, you might be providing a little more individualized attention to students or your level of expectation might be a little bit different because they receive more guidance and support because of the class size. And I don't want to take that, that's what makes Mount Vernon special. I don't want to take that away. But you know, it is our level of expectation, even though our curriculum might be the same as our level of expectation for our students, the same. And even just, um, you know, I, I, I think it's hard because some of those pieces, like the navigating the building and having that independence, you know, to be able to, or yeah. Um, some of that's a little harder to recreate here, but it, it's an interesting insight our seventh grade teachers have shared with us. That the A M S students are a little more independent. So we have to dig into that more.
And so I wonder from the flip side, you know, Kristen, did you see that from the students saying that they felt like the overwhelm? Like on the reverse of what the teachers are seeing?
Yeah, no, we didn't see, we didn't see that from feedback from students. I think that a lot of it was fear of the unknown. A lot of it was, and he checked in in September and also, you know, they're still getting used to how school's going and, you know, maybe it's worth another check in as well to see what that looks like. I think one of the things that was promising to me is they are, you know, there was some worry about are the Amherst kids going to be mean because we're from Mount Vernon? There's like this thought that they will be. And I, multiple people say, I thought they were going to be, and that hasn't happened. And so that's nice. Like, like that can be, because you feel like the new kid, right? It's like multiple new kids in a building. And, and so in general, I think people have been welcoming, haven't seen anything that's in particular, like any sort of targeting or any sort of behaviors towards Mount Vernon students. Like I haven't seen anything like that. So as, as far as my observations go, I think adjustment has been okay this year. I haven't seen, I haven't seen any major issues, but certainly there's, you know, what, what Christine is saying is right. You know, I worked in a six, seven, eight school and but it's when I taught seventh and eighth grade, the kids were different than when I'm teaching in a seven, eight school, because they had already had that sixth grade year to adjust and adapt to the school. Whereas if they came in as a seventh grader, they came in like still figuring out how to use a locker, still figuring out like basic, like some basic stuff because they came from a different model. So I think some of that's just going to be a natural thing. There are things that we can fine tune. But certainly just natural based on the developmental needs of those ages of students.
And in terms of their, like their growth and development academically, are they staying on track like with how they were here? Are they keeping pace as they transition? Are they, I mean, you're mentioning that the teachers are seeing that they may be struggling more. So I'm wondering, is there a dip in their performance? As they transition, are they, I mean, you're mentioning that the teachers are seeing that they may be struggling more. So I'm wondering, is there a dip in their performance?
That's something I'd have to look at. I think, you know, I don't, I have not looked at that data. I have not, I mean, I've dug into the NIBA data we have so far, dug in some of the passes. We talked about individual individual students, I've dug into some of their um state assessment data from last year. I have not sat there and said, okay, here's Amherst, here's Mount Vernon, where's the growth and and but it's something I think that we is worthwhile of our time to do.
Yeah, I just wonder, I mean, it's if it if it's a data point that helps you to figure out what's happening here, is it really impacting them in the way that the teachers are seeing? I would be curious to know that.
And is it everybody or is it just, you know, certain groups or that would be interesting? So that's what we can dig into.
I I can say that, you know, having lived in the middle school. For many, many years, um and the 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 transition thing is real, right? Every time we transition students. There's an adjustment, you know, it doesn't really matter. It does matter and it doesn't matter when that happens, right? Six to seventh grade, fourth to fifth grade, whatever the case may be. There's a lot of configurations around the state. Um there is a transition. I don't want to say a transition dip, but there's a transition challenge. So I think your questions are the right questions. On the other hand, as a mountain principal, I'm going to strongly advocate for. A two-way street here, right? So I think AMS can learn from us too. I think some of the strategies we're doing with. Our smaller groups of students, our NTSS process. The some of the things that we're doing and seeing incredible achievement and growth here. I think those conversations need to happen both ways, to be honest with you. And I think that they will. And um. You know, like Kristen said, we have opportunity to have conversations every Monday. So these these things, shit so happens, Chris, the uh. The counselor down there actually uh was an intern under me uh back in the day. So I know Chris is great. Um so I think Anna Gerard, uh our counselor and Chris teaming up, having some of these conversations around transition because. The um. The social emotional piece of the transition can affect the academic. Performances in the classroom, right? And so the basic needs of students need to be met so that their academic needs can be met. And that's really a foundation that needs to be. Set and laid so that those academic pieces can evolve in place too.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for sharing it, Christine. And kind of what you're speaking to kind of makes sense. So maybe that's. An opportunity for us, at least. With the sixth grade preparing more. Not in terms of the academic piece, but more of the challenges, hey, you're going into. You know, a much bigger pond. Because as you're talking towards the idea that makes total size, you know, new kids, new building. Not as much help, so. Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up what you would comment about academic and I want to phrase this right and frame it right, but. We struggle with foreign language here. It's one thing that we're we're not strong at and we know it, we're working on it. But again, we've kind of hit a. Yeah. Hit a wall this year again with that. So my my question and my ask is that. Your foreign language. Teachers down there aware of the fact that. We're not delivering where we should be as a as a school and it's not a criticism, it's just reality. So that the gap that they already, even when we had a Spanish teacher. My understanding was there was a gap when our kids went there. I just want that gap to keep.
Yeah.
And our kids get frustrated and will. And they check out.
Christine and I are having bigger conversations with our world language department about what world language should look like at the middle school. Um for not just because of that, but just, I think, in general about about where it's most developmentally appropriate and, you know, um. Looking at right now, you know, technically they're getting Spanish one or French one over a three-year period. You know, is that something maybe they do a two-year period? Is there a different way to integrate world language and to be more exploratory at the younger grades? You know, we're looking at all these options. But we really were wrapping in our world language teachers as well, so they're aware. Um but certainly, um we we are very understanding about it and and. Want to prepare it because we want to make sure everybody has a similar experience before they head over to high school.
Thanks. And just a quick. Maybe. Stupid thought, but. Maybe we should plan out how much forty lockers would cost. And as a, I will call it a treat, but a transitional thing is. When you get to sixth graded and yes, we have lockers, we do have, yeah, so there's, it's a treat, I guess.
They get real estate in the hallways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a big deal for them.
It is a big deal. It is a big deal. But that's great. I mean, that is, and that's exactly the stuff, right? Is those those little one less obstacle. Yeah, it's also, um so where I came from, the elementary didn't have lockers at all. They came up, one of the biggest. Anxiety inducing things was the locker, believe it or not. That was one of the biggest things. And so it's just one of, and so. It would be interesting to survey our students at the middle school and find out like, what are those things like a locker? Maybe it's a blind spot that we're missing that we could. We can start, you know, in the spring, Chris and Anna having conversations with students, you know, those kinds of things are. Certainly uh things that we would want on the radar. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
And you wonder too, the more um Chris, and especially now that we have Moose, the therapy dog. Um if he's um able, you know, Chris and Moose could come here and start that connection to, because we haven't done a lot of that, but I think. Having that therapy dog just opens up the different opportunities for kids and those different connections.
Yeah, and I wonder in general about what things we can do, you know, there it's it's a pretty long stretch, I think, sometimes from April or April or May all the way to the end of August. And so I wonder if there's stuff we can do leading up to in the in the in early August. Um sort of like an orientation type base camp or something like that that we can do to get. New students ready and here's what the building looks like and here's literally where the seventh grade teachers are and here's how you get there and. Things like that, that are logistics that might just remediate some of that worry.
Yeah, I know. I wonder about um even once schedules are done and like they can walk around and test out their lockers and those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Before.
Yeah, and find and some familiar faces, you know, if there's some kiddos, you know, who are eight, you know, eighth graders from Mount Vernon who want to come and be mentors or. Something like that, like I think that might be really, really valuable just to to live it a little bit and. You know. Even if we get a group of kiddos from from Amherst who want to participate in it, and then they've got familiar faces and I I have a lot of ideas about it. So I don't want to make any promises. But I I my, the wheels are turning.
Thank you for.
Yes.
That's really helpful. And thanks for coming. So, um we did, and thanks for letting us put this early in the agenda, just so.
Thank you right here and then sneak out. And I love a good budget session, but.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, one tomorrow? Uh yes, Tom, can you turn the TV on? And is this plug not working?
So if uh yeah, we had a little thing with the HDMI over here.
Do you want me to plug it over there?
Worst case scenario is I do have an HDMI with news projector over here, but it doesn't extend all the way out.
Okay, I can come over there.
And I can send it via. Yeah, I have the TV. I just need it.
Oh.
And Patty was on, I want to go grab Patty, maybe she can help.
So while. We do our committee.
It's gonna be time to discuss.
Okay.
The from the superintendent search. Everything was kind of discussed.
I know this.
Any updates you have? Well, I'll give the one update that I have with Kristen. Um we had another twenty-five responses to the communication survey. Um so she's going to have postcards with a QR code at voting day to try and get a little bit more engagement like we had talked about last month. Um the final results will be ready for our December meeting. That is update that she just provided. And I don't have any new policy updates for um. On track and meeting again. We do have one policy that's coming up here that's descended.
Well, I'll ask you the question while we're. A lot of this is a drive to pass the line. Are there other elementary schools around here that are struggling with foreign language?
Um not many have. Uh very few elementary schools have more language capture. Um ones are near to West College, has full language and. Couple others, so. I guess where I'm headed is. We love the partnership and we're gonna talk more, oh, it's a little about it in the budget process because the once a week. Right, the the spread out as opposed to constantly, and that's, we're going to talk more about that during the budget process, a lot of recommendations to do, we'll keep guide. Into uh research evidence-based practice about world language and the elementary plus, right, foreign language in the elementary schools approach. Um because it's an area, obviously, that is is very important to this community. Um we also make sure it works. And we did, as I talked about previously. Did some work with our Amherst Middle School, where are we getting with this model, preparing students for that? And we're going to talk about that as we get to the budget process. Yeah, um so so did you just hook up?
Yeah, she's good.
Um is I, it would be, if possible, then I can I can make it a host and you can share it with the Zoom. Or is it that cable, so the big cable's not working?
Yeah, so are you unplugged from this?
Do you want to plug in now?
Yeah, could we? My desperate face is slowly rising up.
That was my face about a half hour. So only the only place working is.
Well, that's on the TV, but you, if you have the presentation, you would just have to like mimic and follow along with me. I could probably join the Zoom. I just. Haven't, do you want me to try to join the Zoom?
It's up to, I mean, maybe, I mean, um maybe just the owl can pick up enough, but we'll have it up. It doesn't matter. But yes, we could all follow along on this presentation for sure. There's also projection to the Apple TV that I was trying to get to. But we lost Patty.
Yes, I can, I can share with you guys if you want.
Oh, I don't have screen sharing.
Christine, I'm gonna let you increase the screen share in one second. There you go. Perfect. If you can share that, that's great. Perfect. Thank you.
Is it? No, it's just sharing. That's on screen sharing, but I see myself still. Can you?
I think you see yourself to the owl.
Okay. Okay, can you tell on the Zoom?
Yeah.
Can you see my screen on the Zoom?
I can.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I am viewing Christine Landroll's screen. Should I fire up? Christine, you get it at the next one. Yeah, I'll move all those fun things. So a- as. Amy is going to present the bulk of of the FY twenty-four budget where we are, just um. I'm Chris with an E, that's exciting. Um just a couple of things. Um that I want you to keep in mind. So one thing that's that's um I've learned in my little time is. Um how highly regulated we are. Um and just as an example, uh next week, we will have our second Department of Labor visit to the SAU. Um you're going to hear tonight about IDEA, the Special Education Law, and how that regulates what we do. Um next week, I think Christine will be joining an incredibly important meeting at the Hampshire Education Department on the minimum standards. About what we are required to offer as part of public schools based on, it's called the ED three oh six is the regulations. And Christine's going to contribute to that discussion about what's best for schools. Um we have uh a CBA, all right, a collective bargain agreement that regulates what we do, uh district policy. Practice that regulates. So as you look through the lens of this work, it is not. Um there, it really isn't just free to be you and me. We can do what we want. We have to stay within law, uh the guidelines, all those policies, all those statutes, all those. Um regulations. So as you hear about the budget, much of what we're talking about is required by law. The next piece, which is a challenge, um we are talking tonight about FY twenty-four funding that will take us through. Um twenty months from now. So this budget will be part of implementation of June of right of two thousand twenty-four, which is a long way, I'm sorry. Yeah, it'll take us all the way through. Um so it's a long time project, right? And. Um do we have enough in reserve? Do we have enough uh to, if if something happens to our facilities, in our student enrollment, things like that? Um another piece is, and there's been a lot of decisions that the Mount Vernon School Board has made over the last few years that have done an incredibly important job about stabilizing staff. And often there's the decision to stabilize staff and the two classrooms per grade is about as important educational decision as you could make. Done extraordinary job and this community has supported stabilizing staff and right what Tom talked about an extraordinary returns. Um so in a budget of about six million dollars. There is, um as we all know in education, we talk about this all the time, and the education budget is about eighty, eighty-five percent staff benefits. And so that margin outside of staffing isn't that, right, isn't that big? And there's been a commitment here to a level of program for this community. Um that really fixes a lot of the costs that we maintain of it beyond shaking that foundation. But obviously, shake what Tom talked about is extraordinary returns. And then there's going to be a time, we always talk about that, if and and absolutely have discussions about where art could reduction speed. But at some point, you're increasing the risk, risk that you won't have the right funds to implement a consistent program this community expects for the kids. And there's a component of that. Um so we're highly regulated, trying to budget forecast out twenty months. We, there's a lot of this is fixed and we have to be very careful if we reduce in so many areas, we won't have enough, too much risk. And it could fundamentally change the student experience that would be consistent over the last couple of years for the next week of kids. Next one. Um you know, and I, so far this year, we've had, right, the fifth grade experience by sixth graders and the third grade experience times. Um what I want you to know is your interim superintendent, what I've got a chance to particularly participate a little in, but what I've got to observe, there is an extraordinary amount of work going on. This is a place that invests in continual improvement. Right, we've invested in response to classroom, heard about the morning meeting and how to make connections in the classrooms here. That's a big part, and it's been a significant professional development. Um time for school, with some of the conversations that Tom and I had. Uh how do we squeeze out fifteen or twenty more minutes in the school day? And also, we spent a lot of time working with MVEA, right, about the start of school and how to save those ten minutes earlier, that matter. And then we wanted, we were looking at release time and that matter. So we really are focused about squeezing every moment we can of high educational value. Um which is a lot of fun for me. Um bridges, um we've talked about that. That's a significant investment on the next iteration of of high quality research evidence-based. A practice we heard, like the fifth grade talked about it last time. And sometimes, and I talked about this today at a budget meeting with another district. In order to implement a program with efficacy, you need hearts and minds. We cannot supervise teachers enough to compliance and we have the hearts and minds. You have the hearts and minds of teachers here all over the place, but also with incredible work and talk. It takes to in uh to uh integrate and implement a new program. And so the hearts and minds, and we have the hearts and minds consistently on this program, K five everywhere in SAU thirty-nine. But that's really important because no matter how active Christine is, and she's crazy active. She can't be in every classroom ensuring that we implement with efficacy. So we have to, right, get them on board, join this journey and we have. There are, they've seen it, they piloted, and it really is a Charlie can speak. We have, obviously, you have Charlie charts. We really do have cluster skill. Uh this place, as Tom talked about tonight, has strong MTSS. We are looking at data for intervention, we're looking at for intervention, we're looking at data to drive instruction. Which is an extraordinary piece and it's one of the part of the the real core infrastructure of this place. Something that we're just, it's, there's no question, last two years, it's been a math focus. But it's also a literacy focus. So we're gonna, you know, Tom and I, Christine, hopefully, the Maggie and others, we're going to start taking a look at a case study approach. Where we get to dig deeply, look at kids of all different facets of our literacy acquisition and what their experiences is. So this is a place. Um that though the returns and it's it is not resting on its laurels and it's very much engaged, engaged in continual improvement. Something that I truly admire and really believe that the hearts and minds of this place are all going in the same direction, but doing what's best for kids. Mindful of, we're going to talk about the significant investment this community has made in their school. Um so that's just an over philosophical view. Um Amy's going to talk, can I hit the drivers? Or is that, no, it's next. Yeah, so so now we're going to start digging into the budget a little bit more. So what is driving um this budget? What are the, what are the components of the budget that are driving the increases? Um and this year, there's really two major and one minor that work. So you will see tonight a significant increase in student services costs. Both in individual student need as well as things like transportation. Um it is uh so a significant increase. Um we'd like to keep it at that level for now, but certainly because of such a small community. Uh we can dig into non-public and talk very specific about, you know, taking it a little bit more, but there is an increase in student services cost. Um you know, also six uh uh an increase in the middle school tuition. And because of where we are in the. And because of where we are in the determination of cost per pupil, what you're going to see tonight in the budget is you know, the the language of GMR for health insurance, the guarantee maximum rate, what we have is a not to exceed value for the tuition, that that's the cap. Um, it's about, and we'll talk about this, Amy will dig a little bit more, it's about five percent above. Um, that is not required that you budget at that level. Um, we like Amy to sleep well, and I like to sleep well every once in a while. So more you squeezes. You know, actually, a former superintendent of SAU thirty nine, as a very young superintendent, looked at me and said, you don't have to budget the GMR health insurance. We never budget a GMR in SAU thirty nine while I got caught up here. So to sleep well, you budget the not typically budget the not to exceed the GMRs. Um, but we have that tonight, but that's that's uh, one of the reasons why it's up. We are budget, budgeting the not to exceed number, which is very secure. But it also is is may, and there's, you know, they, I sometimes call it the Tom Brady standard of more probable than not. More probably than not, that was able to play gate and really to play gate. So more probably than not, that's a little high. And then the last piece of what we tried to do in this budget is salary adjustments, uh, food service facilities and our our admin support. We, we're trying to stay competitive. Our goal is to attract and retain being people at those service positions and we are not competitive. We have difficult challenge to fill of certain positions in the last year. And sometimes we've had people leave for other areas very close. So we've tried to be deliberate and purposeful in some salary adjustments to be a little bit more competitive. And what you're seeing is I heard that someone's son is making eighteen dollars an hour at Michael Kors or Ripley. Um, outlets. So they're getting eighteen retail.
Target pays eighteen.
So targets nowadays. So that's our, you know, that really is at this level of employment, that's our company. So if we're at thirteen, fourteen, it's not gonna work. And we do wanna fill. So that's, um, that's nothing new, but we're trying to make some adjustments that we can um, to make us to attract and retain. Um, and you'll also see, um, which this community has every right to, and the board's made decisions, some real pride in maintain ma- maintenance of this building. I've heard that um, from a number of Mount Vernon community members at other meetings I've attended. Um, so there is a deliberate and purposeful plan, including the HVAC tech replacements. And of course, continuing long-term capital facilities plan. And I do admire and appreciate um, how Mount Vernon has balanced all those competing interests in limited funds. Um, so our drivers, you're gonna see uh, increased cost in special education. You're going to see the tuition amount and then, of course, wage stuff. Okay, and Amy's gonna take them here and unpack it a little bit more.
Thanks. Okay, so this, um, it just gives a an executive summary of the budget, looking at the total change from FY twenty three to FY twenty four, which were up eighty one one percent. Uh, or seventy seven, six forty seven. And of that, the amount from the operating budget to the default, or really the amount that is, um, you don't really have a whole lot that you can do about is uh, six point six percent of that, or three eighty four, seven eighteen. And then the change from the default to the to the proposed, which is more discretionary um, is ninety two, ninety nine, one point five percent. Um, and this is just the operating budget we backed out, the special one article, so that we're comparing apples to apples. Cause that adds an additional fifty thousand if you don't wanna include um, comparison.
So the six six is the fixed.
Yeah.
That really, there's no, that that's the number.
Wired regularly, required to get.
Yeah.
I'll put you up the one seventy seventies wages.
So we'll get into that. Yeah. So this is just a chart that then provides just a graphical of really everything that I just said, just a, just a visual. So for budget assumptions, um, we are in, we will be in the third year of the MDEA contract um, that expires at the end of uh, FY twenty five. Uh, Steve was talking about the market rate adjustment. So those non-union employees of food service, the facilities and the admin support. There's a five percent market adjustment for those wages that's included. Uh, health and dental, GMR that Steve is talking about, we do have that information. It's four point one percent increase for health and one point five increase for dental. Uh, we also have the New Hampshire Retirement Employer Contribution Rate. That's, um, they do that uh, on a two-year basis. So there's a one point three eight percent decrease, which is great. Um, from twenty one oh two down to nineteen point six four for teachers and a small decrease for non-teachers, uh, point five three percent. So, um, as I believe everyone knows, we had NASDAQ do projections. So those have been really helpful, um, for us to be able to look out. This is based on the spring twenty twenty two NASDAQ report. They did say that their second go around in updating, the data will become um, more accurate. Um, and the projections will be better, but this does show a pretty significant increase in enrollments over the next multiple years. So something to keep in mind and but we'll be keeping up. And I, I'm not sure when we'll get the next report. I think maybe later this winter.
Uh, we submitted it in early October, our enrollment numbers, um, and I'm not sure they have all of their districts to do at the same time. So I'm not sure exactly when we'll get it, but whenever we get it, we should be in really getting at it about that time. Um, interest, interesting with these, you know, we looked at them last spring and we kind of dismissed them like, oh, these are, these are inflated. These are high. We're pretty much at the mark um, this year and um, our projections for next year. We looked at what NASDAQ was projecting, you know, for FY twenty three. Um, and, uh, you know, and and then looking forward um, for FY twenty four, and they're pretty accurate for what we're seeing.
Well, within particularly, I mean, yeah, this is very short term right now, but you know, the trend, it was interesting because when we opened, we were a little bit below the projection, a little bit below. And then all of a sudden, few weeks, few weeks, and now we're here and now we're getting, you know, which is, it's just interesting how the projections. They don't always nail them, especially as you go further in time, but.
Yeah.
Once the goal capacity again, I figure.
Two sixty, I thought.
Yeah, I think it's certainly sixty, two fifty. Two sixty, oh, so we'd be over that. Um, if this comes to fruition.
So what year would be over?
Uh.
Twenty nine.
Uh, probably thirty one. Um, this we should still, it's hard to, you know, but by thirty, thirty one. Yeah, the the backup for the data is in the budget files to complete the actual numbers. Right. Right? So this is the staffing levels and the um, the enrollment is based for FY twenty three is based on October one and for FY twenty four is the NASDAQ. And we are looking to hold steady on the number of teachers. So just the the ratio changes just based on the the change in um, student population. So from two nineteen to two twenty four.
We felt that the NASDAQ projections uh, for FY twenty four were pretty close. Things in some places might be a tiny bit high, um, but actually, well, wait, these were our October one numbers. So it'll be interesting. Tom and I will have to take a look at our current at the end of this week and compare to um, our FY twenty four proposed, but it does, they they're not far off. Uh, from even where we are, if you jump like, you know, a year ahead from like twenty eight to thirty, uh, that's pretty realistic. So, um, we felt these were pretty strong projections and we used them straight through.
So what's the ratio for sixth graders when we move into middle school? What are they looking at? Cause right now we're about almost seventeen, possibly eighteen. When they transition over, what do they?
They're usually, it depends. They're anywhere from twenty to twenty five.
And lately, twenty one, twenty two?
Mm-hmm, about twenty two. Twenty two is what's in my head.
Yeah, me too. It's, it's not that drastic. It's more of just the population of the entire.
Right, seven, yeah.
Lunch is, lunch is, well, it's, it's all cumulative. You got it.
So this is your, your familiar chart that um, we put up with all of the certified staffing and there's no changes from this year to next year? No.
And the only, yeah, the only change, um, really, school psychologist or assessment specialist. Um, we had always used a contracted service provider. So this year, um, we were able to, um, hire Karen Rimmel. She actually used to work at the SAU. So she retired from the FAU and then was really excited about coming back and joining us again. Um, so you know, he is on staff this year, which caught the change in this year, which is continuing forward.
So for the non-certified staff, um, there was a a need for an additional paraprofessional this year and um, that need will continue for next year for the budget. For custodians, we are looking to make the vacant point seven five position a full-time position. Um, the IT is staying the same and the food service is staying the same as well. And then Christine's gonna dive into this slide.
Yeah, so, um, Tom, Steve and I have done a little bit of work uh, around the special areas and what our recommendation was uh, to all of you. So, um, in looking here was last year where we had our Spanish um, teacher and then moving forward this year, we made our adjustments this year to increase art uh, from point four to point eight, um, increase music from point four to point six, keep PE steady. And um, for this year, eliminate Spanish. We're still concerned about, um, uh, you know, are are still concerned about next year being able to find a part-time Spanish teacher. And also, um, uh, we looked at parent survey feedback and the parent survey feedback was very interesting. We're not sure if it's, um, because parents are just happy with the special students having here, but the parent survey feedback was consistent with our current program. So parents, um, they provided feedback on um, how they would prioritize our special areas. And they really prioritize them the way we currently have them. So and Tom, it was it PE or art? Uh, that was prioritized.
Uh, so P was one, uh, art was two, music three, Spanish four. Um, now, the way we, you know, the way, the way that survey read, um, it's not to say that no one puts Spanish as one, no one put art as one, no one put music as one. It was just when you, when you look at those lines, you saw in the board report last couple of months, or yeah, last couple of months. Um, I mean, it was pretty resounding what what that looks like. Um, this is a hard conversation, you know, it's a really hard conversation because we're, and we, it's nothing we haven't already talked about when we had to kind of reboot for this year. Uh, you know, looking at the market, looking at the the survey, looking at, I'm sorry, Christine, that would be, start right up here. Um, you know, looking at the survey, looking at, um, looking at the experience for our students when it comes to um, PE, music, art is robust, it's strong. I am, I am worried about taking Spanish away. I I really struggle with this. Um, we've struggled with this. Um, but then there's also the concern about, um, you know, our personnel, our staffing, our sustainability and and just those kind of things moving forward. And so it's kind of like, it's just one of these things where the reality that we're facing, the reality of the market, the reality of times, the reality of um, I think really kind of where the survey showed people are at, given our current offerings. I I am concerned if we go in another, if we go another way, I'm concerned the whole thing could become very offensive. And um, and then, and then there could be some trickles from that. So, um, it's a tough one. It's a really tough one. And um, and I know that, you know, Sarah, we've talked about the the history of the program and how it got here and and we do have a Spanish club and I will tell you, we only have five kids in Spanish club. I'm kind of surprised by that, to be honest, but um, so we are trying to come up with other ways to provide a Spanish experience to students. Uh, we've talked about Belax. Belax is not an ideal way to do it, but it is another way to do it. Um, we talked, we heard about transition tonight. I think that's probably one of the bigger areas that we're gonna need to really dig in on. How do we sustain that that transition experience for Mount Vernon students to uh, AMS and that's sort of the high school down the road?
So based on the parent survey feedback, um, which is really representative of what we're offering this year, the availability of our current staff in those positions and, um, you know, while we don't wanna plan programs around staff, we also know with a teacher shortage, if we're not considering our staff and, um, you know, our staffing interests for, um, you know, their part-time, um, you know, of of hard time uh, availability. And for example, our art teacher is point two down and as as, um, we shared earlier in the year point two down in Amherst. So she's able to be full-time being point eight here and point two down there and just the desire for where um, our staff want to be. Um, we're worried that if we uh, move back to our FY twenty two levels, we could end up losing staff. Um, and then we could be in a situation where we have multiple part-time positions to fill, which we're worried about being in that position. Um, so we, uh, our recommendation moving forward, given the information we have today um, would be, um, and this is what, you know, we we put in the budget. And again, we were able to make little shifts or adjustments, uh, but we also wanna be fair to the staff that are in those positions. Um, so our recommendation is really, um, keeping as is. But a few pieces, um, one thing, our music teacher has been able to, um, begin to think about how to add some, um, of uh, intermittent, uh, instrumental aspect to um, the current music program, certainly not a full band program in music, but um, while students spend a majority of their time on the vocal music, she is looking at that instrumental key. Um, we, we did make sure we budgeted for the band stipend for next year, which it had fallen off the stipend list. Um, so budgeting for that and really looking, um, for, um, a, a, a band program. And then exploring options around a a Spanish program. We have some work to do with the middle school. Um, uh, for, you know, our, our teachers have started to give us some feedback at the middle schools for having these conversations, hey, AMS does not Spanish teacher. What are the implications? And how do we look at the AMS Spanish program? But it would give AMS time to look at their program. Um, and really kind of work together on what would that best model be? And then, um, uh, offering a Spanish club this year and then information to families about Belax. So that was really where, but you know, what what we put in draft one of the budget based on you know, survey feedback and the current staff that we have and just the concern around teacher shortage. Steven, if you wanna.
Yeah, um, it was, it was really good to dive deep. So if you remember last meeting, we talked about when we got all the music teachers together in the inequity, when we followed the numbers of Mount Vernon youngsters that are in the the bands at South Vegan. And how, you know, we really can't add more special in because of the configuration of the teachers and the time without really going to an outside of school day program, which some do. I i- in the, in the district that I work in, band was outside of school day. It was totally out of the sequence. That way all the kids could do it without sacrificing others.
It was outside of the school daycare as well.
Yeah.
When it was here.
And so that is an option, but as Christine talked about, to build a band program, instruments and all, it's gonna take time. Um, it's not, it's not something we can do in FY twenty four to get this going. Um, but I think, I I think as Christine spoke to, this is the the best plan now. Uh, we take a look at our band program, build that, take a deeper dive in the Spanish. The the best model for Spanish could be sixth graders taking every day. You know, and 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 I'm not saying it is, but but take you look at what is best practice. Is it spread out through years or is it concentrating for a year? Um, and that's what we have to find out. What is gonna be the highest impact on student? And that's the work for next, for our next cycle is to take a look at band and take a look at Spanish. Cause those are the areas, I think, we have some areas to grow and to align more with Amherst and South Union.
See, Jack Black's a bill.
Yeah.
Don't put that in.
All right, so back to the numbers. Um, this is the default calculation. So the way we do that is we start with the FY twenty three adopted budget. Back out that horn article, so we have our our true operating budget and then we need to add back those items that are contractual. So student services, which um, includes transportation, student services. That's a big chunk of it, three and a half percent, um, a little over two hundred. That's a big chunk of it, three and a half percent, um, a little over two hundred and seven thousand. The uh, tuition to AMS, which is, as Steve spoke about, the, that really the guaranteed maximum um, rate, the way that is calculated in the tuition agreement is we take the last two um, cost per pupil numbers, take the average and then apply the five point six percent to that and then multiply that by the number of students. So from this year to next year, we're um, using the current sixth and seventh grade students to get that number. So it is an estimate. Um, I will say our calculation from last year for this year's tuition was pretty dead on. So um, I'm hoping this is, this is high. So. Yeah, yeah.
You used not to exceed rate last year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we were only off by like six, six, seven thousand dollars. So, which is great to be able to have that predictability.
You rather pleasantly surprised.
Exactly, right. Yeah, so that's um, that's one point eight percent of that. And then as you asked George, the, the salaries and benefits.
From the increases.
Those are the increases, yeah. So that's one point three percent. The SU apportionment I have not put in here yet. It will be an increase, but we don't have that set yet. So I'm gonna wait till we have the public hearing and then I'll populate the number. The number that's in there now is just last year's number. But that will be an increase as well.
But off the top of your head, what is the eighty-five percent?
Forty K.
But the overall um, wages, benefits, the whole kit and caboodle of the overall budget. What percentage is that? Is that the eighty-five percent we're talking about?
Oh, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's another side.
And there's a reason why I can.
Yeah, yeah. So um, and then just.
Transportation, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Do we know what our capacity rate is on most of the bus runs? You know what I'm saying? We gotta run buses everywhere to pick up kids. But do we have some routes where the bus pulls up and there's twelve kids that walk off?
We only have three buses, but they're not full.
Well, they're not full, but I, I, there is, I do know of the three buses, there's one that's much fuller than the other two. That's pretty, I mean, I'm dating myself. Back in the day when you took the bus, it was like, you were, you were packed in. Yeah, but.
Not an M B.
I will like drive through Amherst and see the drop-off parade every, you know, try to avoid it. But it just, you know, I go through Bedford and it's like everybody drives a car in Bedford. Nobody uses a bus, but it just was curious. Not that we can cut a route because there's gonna be that one or two.
Yeah.
Be going by anyway, just curious what our, our, our capacity rate was on these. Cause it's a number.
Yeah, I think that um, that you couldn't shrink it to two just because of the geographic size and then to the timeframe for the students on the bus.
I got it.
We did last year though, one change we made, we asked parents to opt in to taking the bus. And if they weren't going to take the bus at all, they let us know and we're able to eliminate, eliminate them from the route. Which was um, helpful. We still have a little work to do with our bus company to refine that process even further, but it is something we're gonna continue to do. And if at some point we have only half of the parents opting in for buses, we might be able to drop down to two buses. Uh, but at this point, three are definitely needed here.
And as I said, we do have new routes, updated routes coming out and just waiting for them to send me. We should hopefully be starting next week, so.
And that trans, that line right there is uh.
Yeah.
Not regular. So that's what that increases.
Yeah, so the total change, um, as I said, is the, is six point six percent.
So that's special again, based on current special ed participants. Not, so if you do have an increase next year, right, that's only a lot.
When we budget for what we know.
For what you know.
All right, and so then this is the, the difference between the default and the proposed. So that's a total of one and a half percent or a little, almost ninety-three thousand. And that's made up of those salary and benefit adjustments, non-union um, benefit pool. Um, uh, the regular ed transportation, which is about one two percent. We did factor in um, some pupil increases uh, in, in case it continues, uh, facilities. Uh, we're looking to, as I said, increase the uh, one of the, the facility staff from point seven five to one point oh. Um, that, and I'm sorry, that's actually in, in the salary and benefit adjustments. That includes the facility staff increase from point seven five to one point oh.
And what's the cause of that on this period?
Cause it's vacant. We can't fill it in point seven five.
Yeah, we, uh, needing full time. The only way is to attract someone willing to do full time.
Yeah.
Um, we budgeted for substitutes, which we, that didn't, it carried over. It, for some reason, it just didn't seem to be um, something that has been budgeted enough for. So looking at actuals, we, we put a line in for that. Um, this is where that added band stipend is. Um, and as I said, the, the non-union salary adjustments.
So that, that's inclusive of the market adjustments you talked about earlier?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And then the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And what is the food service transfer? What is that?
So that is um, in case the food service program is not able to fully fund itself, then there's a transfer from the general fund to um, to cover that loss. So that was not budgeted for, for this current year. So that's in there. You can certainly talk about it. You can, you know, take, look to take that for a certain fund balance. But I put it in there as, you know, something for the board to consider and you may decide to, to back it out.
And I'm assuming that's your run rate.
So this is seen, so.
It's based on, um, you know, we do some projections.
Right. But it has some since historical.
And we look at. Yeah.
I would imagine.
Yes, it does.
There's some written, right, this is what, so um, in my thirteen, thirteen years, we never budgeted for the food service staff. We put a dollar in, we transferred out of fund balance. Um, and we always had enough fund balance to cover it because raising it, um, it was just, it's fifteen thousand dollars. Now, every BA ever worked with tried to put this in because it's, it reduces your risk. And you're going to see later on, and I completely understand why Amy put it in, and it's a great conversation on the board. There's pressure on the fund balance this year, more pressure in the past. Cause we're talking about, you'll see in a minute, adding a um, a reserve for health insurance. Um, starting to build a special ed reserve. Um, there's also, we made some reductions in technology that we hope to get out of fund balance. Um, so it really is the appetite for um, risk. Um, we, we can't go on a hole. Um, and so we have to make, so whatever we have to, um, we have to pay for this deficit. If the, and it's, and I always used to say, you gotta sell a lot of tater tots to, to cover a school, uh, you know, a school lunch, a very, very small school. Uh, typically, high schools make the money to cover for dinner.
So last year was, was different this year because we. You know, covered. So last year we did pretty well and, and um, you know, and didn't need to have transfer. But, so we had to look at previous years prior to, to when that was. So, so it's, it's, it's an estimate, um, and I think definitely something that we wanna dive into and talk about and see, you know, how you wanna handle it. Um, the facilities includes a, some new equipment, a floor extractor. Um, this is something that Roger put in. I don't know a whole lot about what it does.
Bar insurance, I, I mean, he's, he has kept up with his service plan for this.
Yeah, um, increases in utilities. There's a uh, small increase in our property and liability insurance. And our preventive maintenance contracts are also included in that increase.
What's in the miscellaneous?
That's just the ups and downs of lots of different things. So I can pull that out, but it's just like an up and down. Yeah, it's mostly like supplies and just.
This is to bring the unbudgeted items, though, right?
It's, I mean, it does, like a lot of my curriculum lines will go up like fifty dollars because I'm compensating for an increase in cost for workbooks and fifty dollars.
Something else went down. So it's just sort of a, there's a, there's a clump of things that are left over. And nothing is super significant to pull out. It really was a lot of supply things, so it's kind of. Um. All right, so and then, yeah, yeah. So this, this just shows the breakdown between the three funds. Uh, the general fund, the food service fund and, and grants, no change in grants, we're budgeting the same food service. Um, we are, do have an increase. Some of that is that, you know, the salaries. Um, and then general fund is where you'll find most of the change. And this is that chart I think we were talking about. So this district is a little different than others. Most districts, you'll see that salary and benefit line item in the seventy to eighty percent. Um, but because we tuitioned to Amherst, it's a different split. So it's about fifty-three percent for salaries and benefits to tuition. Because it, it, we are, you know, using that guaranteed maximum, it's almost twenty-three percent. And, and I looked back at last year, it's a pretty similar split. Um, for how these, these um, different areas get broken out. Student services, it's a little over eight, eight percent. Admin, four point eight, curriculum two, facilities three, food service one. Tech, point eight is, Steve said, we did uh, make some cuts there and transportation, four point four.
And Amy, administration is the principal's office, which includes um, like nurse software. And it includes some guidance supplies and, and yeah, so administration is a pretty, is a bigger bucket than we would maybe, you know, assume a first glance.
Right.
So the SU apportionment in that?
I believe it is, yes.
Oh, yeah, that would be a big.
Yeah, yeah, I could even pull that out too, if that would be helpful.
So Amy, just two slides back, just real quick. Because it's, yeah, it's kind of different one I'm used to seeing.
Yeah.
So for the grants, that's an actual ad.
So it's an ad and expense. There's offsetting revenue.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get into.
Cause typically when I see a grant.
Yeah, we'll do revenues in the next draft, but.
You're talking about, this is the, when, when you actually, the allotment or the.
Yeah.
Right, where it's coming from, you, 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 this is the bucket you're pulling.
So ideally, the, the food service is, there's offsetting revenue and the grants, there is offsetting revenue.
Okay.
And then it's the general fund that you're really trying to raise.
Revenue we like.
We do.
And just looking at this, it looks like it's about seventy-six percent in wages and tuition, just right off the top. So it doesn't give you a lot of wiggle.
Not a lot, no.
Yeah, and the reason I bring that up is, it, it's certainly. I've seen this over at SAU.
Yeah.
Amy probably knows this, I know she knows this, but it's certainly an education that we need to do to our constituents. Understand, cause a lot of comments I've heard is, well, these budgets are blown in and out and people just don't realize, you know, a major portion, unless you're willing to remove actual teachers from that environment, you're not gonna see the impact that you would, you think you're seeing. So unless you, it's a choice at that point. So I think we need to make sure that we educate everyone.
Exactly.
Hey guys, this is what, forget about this. Unless you want, wanted to discuss this, then put it to the side. This is the piece we need to talk about because it's not a lot.
You can't cut savings on paper clips and papers. No, it's just not it, no.
Yeah.
Go right on.
And we talk a lot, you know, there are times where, you know, a bunch of committees have said, oh, do you really need to buy the workbooks? And then if you don't, teachers are photocopying and you're paying more at a photocopy, you know, so there's the pennyweight compulsion.
Yeah.
We want our, we, we want to keep and maintain our high-quality teachers. They do amazing things with our students. But we also wanna make sure they have the resources they need to. So um, I feel like our budget is maintaining a lot of that, um, and trying to cut paper clips to the paper.
And again, but I think it's a, this is me and myself, it's a constant education because people just don't realize. And when you talk about cutting some of these things, you're talking about maybe two cents off the tax rate.
Yeah.
Okay, George.
So um, we're gonna do a, a bit of a deep dive into facilities. Um, this board has done such a great job with um, setting up funds and, and paying into them and identifying the work that needs to be done. So just in review, uh, we completed the roof project. Um, that was done in FY twenty-two. Um, we started the HVAC duct replacement project. Uh, I have a little more detail on that, that that was started last year and is continuing into this year. In FY twenty-eight, there's a planned playground equipment project. And in FY thirty-one, a fire alarm system. Um, so the phase two of the HVAC duct replacement um, where the vendor is reviewing the cost for that. So I do have an estimate to the next slide. And this is how we are looking to pay for that HVAC duct replacement project. This is the same uh, mechanism that we showed last year. So the total cost is estimated at two hundred and forty-three thousand. We have S R three funds that are already earmarked and put into our management system and submitted to the DOE uh, for fifty-five thousand. The uh, FY twenty-two work came in at eighty-eight, uh, which is a little less than what we have projected. And we're carrying a hundred thousand for FY twenty-three. Roger's uh, working on getting that, um, that final cost.
So what's E T F?
Expendable trust fund.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, so the, these funds are already earmarked, don't we have them, this is just a plan, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's one suggestion I would make as we get closer to having public hearing and stuff like that is, I don't know whether it's on the actual slide, but I'm guilty of it or we're guilty of it at Coke. We use modickers all the time.
Yeah, I know, sorry.
You're sitting there going. Can I buy a vowel? Put a glossary on each slide.
Yeah.
So that people would know.
Yeah.
What it is.
Yeah.
They still, even with the explanation, I mean, I don't know what it is, but we can take it further from there.
Yeah.
But at least it's just not letters.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. No, I know. So um, this is similar also to what was presented last year. It just shows the, the funding plan for your, your capital reserve expendable trust fund. So the um, the roof placement was completed. We have phase one of the HVAC, phase two. So this just shows really the, the funds going in and out and the balances. So the end of this year will be, will be low at sixty-six thousand. So uh, we are looking to keep up with that fifty thousand dollar Warren article to uh, for contribution so that we maintain uh, more level funding to be able to fund projects going out. So um, this is a review of all of the uh, reserve funds that we're talking about. So the property maintenance fund is the one we just were speaking out about where there's a balance of one sixteen. Um, we're recommending a contribution to maintain at that fifty thousand level. And uh, the source of funding we're recommending is again through the unassigned fund balance. Uh, this year, we're also recommending that the board consider a contribution request for the student with disabilities fund. That fund exists, a balance of thirty-two thousand. I'm not sure when the last time that was, um, the board, yeah, I think it's been a while.
Long time.
Yeah, so with um, you know, it differences in population can, can really impact um, the budget and the financial stability of the district. So we're recommending increasing that balance um, with a contribution request of fifty thousand. And again, the so, source of the funds from unassigned fund balance. Um, so those are two existing funds. The health insurance fund is something I think we talked a little bit about in the last board meeting. Um, I had brought it up last year and uh, I think it's something that we should consider. This is a small district and changes in um, health and dental insurance elections happen after we've done the budget. So there could be um, a change, you know, a, a, a family event that causes.
You can ask.
You can ask. So just, this is something. So, just, this is something for the board to, uh, consider this new funds, we would establish the fund. And recommend a, uh, contribution to that fund and we. Uh, thought fifteen thousand was a, a good starting point and also that would come from unassigned fund balance.
So help me, I, I heard, but I didn't love it till what he said, what's, was this being useful?
So we, um, right now, we have some who take, doesn't take health insurance. So makes the buyout, very small amount.
Yeah.
Um, they have a call under the bed and so they give to their spouses, spouses, his job qualifying, but now they pop on ours as a family. That's a twenty-six thousand dollar swing. Twenty-six thousand dollar unanticipated swing, we passed the budget month, there's. Exactly, there's nothing we can do about it, they're eligible by contract qualifying events. And if we had two of those in one year. That would be a significant impact on the budget, this is a hedge. Um, so that allows us to implement the budget as approved versus, you never want to cut a budget to, to fund a couple of health insurance changes, so. Um, I don't think, this one, I think once we got it up to, you know, in two years, if you, you could stay solid if. And you'd be all set, because that would be two a year, and I think you'd be fine, and then. Um, you really don't, you, you don't have to worry about that, um, but there's not, this is a very tight budget. And this swing like that has the possibly impact to the overall situation, that's how tight the budget.
So we, I'm sorry, just real quick, could we maybe. Skinny up that disability fund? To maybe move money to health insurance, so maybe keep it at fifteen, but maybe reduce the disability fund a little. Because, and, and the reason I say that is because you said you haven't seen. Month in that, so fifty thousand, to me, maybe a little bit high, so maybe there could be some work room there. To allocate it, because I certainly agree, I think we need to keep something, and, because we see it all the time. Because there's people that get married, have kids, we have an eighty-twenty split where we pick up eighty percent, the employee picks up twenty percent. But if they're going from a plan that costs, singles thirteen thousand, now they move to a family, they get married and. Now you're looking at a thirty-two thousand dollar player. And now we pick up eighty percent of that, we never budgeted for it, but we have to pay it, it's the same thing every year.
So it's, all of this is board decision.
Yeah.
Where I would like to see the students with disability fund, to be honest with you, is one out of this replacement, I'd like to see that a hundred fifty thousand. Um, that would make, um, max sleep well, angry sleep well, nicely better. Um, uh, and, you know, we'll talk more a- about. Um, what this looks like and, and, and how often this is happening to schools now, and in, in this current age. Um, how long we get there, um, this is, i- if, if the board could support fifty with a fund balance, that would be great. That would be aggressive and I support, we'd be halfway there next year, but we had to go thirty and incrementally, I get it. Um, the health insurance at fifteen gives us, um, you know, at, at least a, a single to a two person. Right, or it gets us a two person to a family, so it's almost fair. Um, and, and that's going from zero to that, so. Um, but yeah, whatever the board wants, all we're trying to do is, is provide enough. Support in reserves to implement the budget for the student experience consistently over time.
So to me, this is, we can talk about numbers all day, this is prudent, this is real world stuff, I've seen this stuff.
Yeah.
This will happen, we're just putting our heads in the sand, if you're thinking, okay, it's not, no, you are, and I think the prudent thing is the budget for it. We could talk about how much.
That's right.
And, and increment over time, there's also one other tool. Um, that the state, um, has allowed school districts to do, and Amy and I talked about this briefly. And to be completely transparent, Adam and I talked about it, it was not, if, if he did not feel, um, that it was. It, you know, was, was right for these communities, is a tax rate stabilization fund, so the state years ago allowed school districts. Like towns to save two and a half percent for tax rate stabilization, two years ago, they changed it to five percent because it was so popular. So for example, in Hockington where I was, we built that fund up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and then we built it up to five hundred thousand dollars. And so we had a reserve that we could use to, if we had a shortfall in revenue or in expense, you can, you can take it to keep your tax rate stable. So it's all about tax rate stabilization.
And where does that come from?
It comes from fund balance, so if you had twenty-five thousand dollars of fund balance, you, you put it into, and, but the town has to vote. So the town authorizes the creation of the fund and funding the fund. And there are some towns that turn, some to be, in complete transparency, some people. Like my, I have deeper spectrum, Adam, he felt that we returned everything back. Um, yeah, and, but it's really depends on, that's why I love that the community votes. And from the community where I came from, there, they wanted stabilization. We don't want high and low, we want to get a budget predictive, leveled out tax rate. In that, but that was a community's interest, and by a wide margin, that was a separate warrant. Um, there's a community not far from here that I used to read the minutes and not understand, who said, no way. Any dime we have left over, it's going back. They, that means they had huge spikes, peaks and valleys, so really it's up to the community, but it is another tool. It's a tool that towns have always had.
So why would we not put that on the warrant to let the town decide, and I think that's my question here is. Why would we not give the town the option to say, this is something we want, or this is something we don't want? To me, the prudent thing to do would be to put it on there and let the townspeople decide.
Uh, I, I, I agree, it was incredibly, but if, um, I was very, uh, I was from a small district. Small districts have peaks, Amherst, bigger district, right, thirty-two, it doesn't have as many peaks, this play peaks and valleys, like, you're gonna, this is a peak.
Yeah, so what happens in that case, like we, if we have all these, um, you know, warrant articles on, let's say, three of them pass and that. That one, that fund is established, does that one take precedence?
So.
That was number one?
This was kind of fun, is you fund them basically, or that they list on the block.
So even if that fund is approved by the taxpayer, if you listed it last, it would be funded last.
If, if they're all approved.
Okay.
Or if it's only one approved, it's, it's first, obviously, it's the only one.
And that's another conversation.
Which is fun.
To have, you, yeah, you all need to tell me what order you want to do then, so.
So is that property maintenance fund? That fifty out of the other sign, is that in addition to the warrant article?
No, that's not. Yeah. Yeah, these would all be separate warrant articles. So, one thing, could we put on the. The amount that you want to get each fund to, so that the community understands that there, it's not like an, an endless pit of a bucket.
That's a great idea.
Because that way they could at least see, like, the tuition contingency fund, you know, that we want to fund it to this amount.
Yeah, yeah.
Same thing, health insurance, we want to fund it to this amount, like with the health insurance, George, I would go the opposite of you, I would say, if you think you need fifty thousand in there, then say. You're requesting fifty thousand. With, with the caveat of, this is what if we get to, and we cap it there right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I love it. Um, but next, next meeting, we're going to talk about the tax rate.
I know.
And anything that you put in a reserve, doesn't reduce your tax rate.
Right.
And if you say, I mean, I looked at it briefly. Last year, I think we used something like, I don't know if it was before and after the fifty, but say it was two hundred eighty thousand dollars that reduced your tax rate. If you only put a hundred forty thousand dollars. Then you have raised your taxes by a hundred and forty thousand dollars this year. It's the delta on how much you put last year. So if you put fund balance and two hundred thousand dollars into your tax rate, and you put two hundred thousand dollars this year, beautiful. You put three hundred, it'll reduce your taxes, you put a hundred, you increase your taxes.
Yeah.
So, and a, a couple of weeks ago, uh, one meeting ago, I talked, this is a good year to think about this stuff. Because you have a one-time, seven and a half percent piece of retire. But to be honest, it's about twenty-three, right? It's money, it funds, you know, it takes care of one and a half of these, I don't mind it. Um, it's not as much as I hope, stayed in Hampshire, blah, 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 but it's money, um, that helps. Um, and we'll talk next week, next month, I was saying next week, sorry, next month, we'll talk about. The entire revenue picture, um, and the impact on the tax rate, because. Um, that's why slow and steady wins the race, we don't want to put two hundred thousand here and increase your tax rate. By a dollar fifty. Um, because an eight percent bump on the expense side, we're gonna have some revenue shifts. Um, but we want to be, I want to be very careful and invite, and so is Amy, we talk about this stuff all the time, the impact on the tax rate.
Yeah.
Um, in my world, and Amy knows this, in my world. Tax rate was much more important than the expense, Steve, tell us what's our tax bill. Um, and if we had a windfall of revenue, then they were much more palpable to increase of expense. Um, and so if you get here, if you get ten kids new. That's fifty thousand dollars more revenue, because it adds. That's money. And we'll, we'll have an adequacy estimate, that's money here, that, you know, ten kids is, this is about about fifty, it's about. Plus, I'm an ish, I know Amy doesn't like it, I'm an ish, um, so somewhere between forty and fifty thousand dollars in revenue there, twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue in. The, uh, one-time retirement, and we'll talk twenty-five thousand dollars in special education aid. That's a hundred thousand dollars. Um, you know, that's, that's money, it helps. Um, so we gotta weigh long-term security and tax rate, immediate tax rate in that. Because I want you guys to get up and stand up there. I prefer to have you have a smaller.
Believe me, I know. Uh, for draw two.
Um, but I do think, as you said, Sarah and Amy and I, we've talked about this for like two minutes, but we've talked about it quite a bit. It is worth, at the next time we do the entire revenue picture, to take a look at a tax rate stabilization fund. Which is unique to Mount Vernon and most of the other districts, because it just has the signs. One student affects this place more than one student in South Eagan, or one student in Amherst, it's not a judge, that's pure math, that's mathematics.
Right.
Um, and a tax rate stabilization fund here may be more valuable than the other places, because you're more suspect of peaks and valleys.
Could that potentially take the place of some of, like, of the students with disabilities fund, like if we had the tax rate stabilization? It's a mouthful, that fund, if we had that, that potentially offset that fund?
So it's really about tax. Um, it's not supposed to be used as a contingency fund for emergencies.
Okay.
It's really, now, that doesn't mean if you had two hundred thousand, or you lost two boilers and two kids, or you could petition the commissioner.
Ah.
Like you and I actually, chair in the, in the soup, would go to the commissioner and say, we would like to use these funds. Uh, so it's designed for, it really is, and this is what's, we have to be careful, because we are telling the community in March. Or asking the community to fund this for tax rate stabilization, we didn't give you permission to fund the boilers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and credibility is more than anything, but you can go to the community and say, look, it's an emergency.
Yeah.
Like, um, Tom and I are talking about a district not too far from here that has a one point three million dollar shortfall. Not us, by the way, not anywhere around us. And how do you do, how do you, that was a, an error in accounting, big one, so how do you do that?
Through the VA salary that just got fired.
They did have changes, yeah.
Um.
But, so there's a limited line.
So who do you position when you preuse the.
Um, you, so if it's for tax rate, you guys decide. So, right, so if we had two hundred thousand, like, if, if this was three years from now, we have two hundred thousand dollars in there. Because of, of the point eight. I would advise you to take a hundred thousand dollars in as revenue to increase your, decrease your tax rate. So there's no formal process outside of this.
You guys get the scenario, it's basically up to the board to decide.
To the board, and as Amy, as you account, like if you put, it, it always, it counts as. Log underser fund balance, it really is more underser fund balance.
Yeah.
But it's in a bank account as opposed to in your operating budget.
Well, it feels like it sets future boards up for greater success.
But when I.
Yes, yeah.
When I left.
That's, that's how impressed it is. Actually, I thought they used contingency funds to, um. To stabilize the tax.
I think there was seven hundred thousand dollars in reserves when I left, and when I got there, it's fifty thousand. Was there a long time?
Yeah.
But you build up over time, there over time. And it is insecure.
So help me out, another stupid question, what's the difference between? These funds here and how the unassigned fund balance is funding versus. Back at the end of the fiscal year, we, I think the number was mid threes, three fifty, and we had a shopping list.
Right.
And we checked off and voted and all that about, you know, the new shed or the this and that.
Yeah.
How was that money different from this one?
So we're taking, so that money started at three thirty. We're gonna take, this would put fifty thousand into maintenance, putting a bank account you can use someday. Uh, fifty thousand in student, different bank account.
So it's the same bucket.
Same bucket now, and you can put it for savings for a rainy day. Where those projects use, right, you do projects, which is great, but what you don't use goes back to the tax. To reduce the next year's taxes, like in small towns like this, in where I came from, the biggest source of revenue. Is your fund balance, well, outside of the state, but you know, it's a big, it's, it's a big source of revenue, is your fund balance.
And, and we need to commit to that before the end of the fiscal year and, and have an agreement, because those need to come out of. So let's say, at the end of this year, those need to come out this year, but it's the same hot line.
But that, that number moves.
Based on our projections, so you'll be getting projections, it's. It's early, but you know, we're gonna have, we'll have Q one, um. Uh, I think we'll, we'll have them in December for you, and then we'll get a little bit better, or we'll get a little bit faster. At getting them out to you, but it's, it's early still, so it makes us nervous to. Uh, we're gonna be, we're gonna be conservative.
But, for example, this year, if you wanted to. You could ask me, Amy, to take a hard look at the cost per people at Amherst. Instead of budgeting the not-to-exceed rate, you could budget the not-to-exceed rate minus thirty thousand dollars. Why? Because you have a contingency fund of that third. So you reduced your budget by thirty thousand dollars. And if the worst case scenario came in, that, that hit, then you'd hit your fund. Not necessarily recommending that, but you can do that, because. Based on, uh, what I think is increased enrollment at Amherst, and some other things related to expenses there. I don't see a five percent increase in cost per pupil happening.
So we could, you're saying, look at using the, what's in that contingency fund right now to help offset the hundred and two thousand, yeah.
Yeah, you could drop your that to seventy.
I'd be okay with asking you to take a hard look at that.
And then what you hope is, that the GM, the not-to-exceed amount comes in less. You budgeted better, you don't have to touch your contingents.
Yeah.
But if, you know, you can always just say, ah, Steve sold us down the river. Then you have, then you just have, the worst case scenario is you go to thirty-three grand, and you budget it, you know what I mean? If this is, and I, Amy and I looked at this briefly, and we can, I can, I can certainly look more. I don't know if it's, it's a five percent increase this year, I really don't.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there's some funky things going on, um, you know, like.
So when do you need these numbers to be?
So.
Solidified by.
You know, we just thought it was really important to. Make sure you all knew about the reserves that the district has, what the balances were, what our recommendations are. Um, this is for you to think about, it's, these are not difficult things for me to make changes to, so. You know, I'll be drafting the warrant articles and having a blank space for, um, where it goes, we will need to talk next month about. The order that, that you would consider, um, and we can also easily look at. Um, taking a, a look at the tuition amount and coming back with a recommendation. Of potentially using some of all of this, um, bunch or two, so.
Yeah, it just has a, hopefully it's a buffer, not as, um, but we'll have.
It's not hard for me to make changes, I don't need to know anything about that yet.
And you need to see the full revenue picture.
Yeah.
Once you see the full revenue picture and the first fund balance, um, estimate, then that's, you can figure this out, but. If, if we can, you know, project in two years from now, having significant increase here. So it's helped yourself, right?
And my last question.
Yeah.
Because I know I'm dragging it on here, but.
That's okay.
I think I mentioned a meeting or two ago about doing something like this for a legal fund, and you, you said we already budgeted legal.
We do budget.
What is the number, and is it enough, because obviously, we've incurred expenses here.
Yeah.
I don't see that going away, I think, well, I, I don't want it, but it's, it's reality that. We're gonna be in litigation every now and then.
Yeah, we've been okay, but you, you really haven't had to use your special ed legal. Uh, and there's about four thousand in regular legal, so I feel comfortable leaving that.
And so is SAU legal?
Yeah, the SAU legal is separate.
Yeah, but we're gonna end up with a portion of that.
Yeah, that's out of the difference, that's how you portion.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So one of the concern I have is, and I guess I wish Preston was here, because I did have a conversation with him, I think, two meetings ago. And he kind of relayed my, or at least laid my fears a little bit, uh, because seeing how. Power, fuel, all these costs increasing significantly, I believe we're under a contract. When I spoke to him, I don't know when that contract expires, and he convinced me, I said, well, is there a force majority clause in there, he said, no.
This is Roger?
Yeah, so eating oil is not on a fixed yearly, it's annual. Right, eating oil here is annual, I think you talked about.
I believe so, yeah. I think we can get a little more direction of the story is.
Yeah, so my only concern is, you know. Depending on when somebody's contract expires, we look, looking ahead.
Yeah.
I know for our, we're but we're seeing significant increases, so. And I guess what I'm leading to is, you talked about the budget being very tight. I can see where some of the areas where we're thinking we're gonna have a little bit of cushion, right, to get it eaten up. Yeah, by some of this stuff, and.
I know there are increases in somebody's budget for.
For it, okay.
Yeah. But yeah, we can. Take a hard look and ensure you feel comfortable.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, so um.
So at the last meeting, we talked about um getting a price for. Um the facility study that would um. Prepare for. A potential bond of expanding the footprint as well as the the instruction to keep seventh and eighth grade. Uh here as opposed to paid tuition. Um so this would, I, so the recommendation is if borderline, and it really is a separate warrant article, not funded out of the. Um uh fund balance, this is really, this would be a really good test of the community's interest. If community overwhelmingly supports this, then you know. You have strong community interest in looking at seventh and eighth grade here on this site. And if this gets ten percent support. Then if you can't even get it's money to study it, and you can't, you know, then there isn't much of an appetite. So for sixty thousand dollars, you would get the architectural design, the construction manager estimate of how much it would cost to build. The pre-bond civil engineering, this includes staffing. So you would know how much the building would cost, and we could also develop all the costs associated with seventh and eighth grade here on campus. It would cost sixty thousand dollars to have that.
The huge, one other thing, though, that I just realized, because you have this in seventh and eighth grade location. When I looked at the growth chart previously. Even without this. It looks like we're gonna be busting at the seams in about six or seven years anyway. So just to say it's a seventh, eighth grade, to me, it's bigger than that.
No, I. I would, I'm with you, I would give NASTIC a couple more years.
No, no, and I hear you, but and I would make the decision, but.
Yeah.
By the way, keep this in mind, right, that some of the projections we're seeing, even if you. Don't assume this. We could be back here in a few years anyway, and here's why, and it's preliminary, but. I think that also needs to be.
No, I'm with you. I'm just projecting on one year work and projections out eight years.
I'm not, no, no, I hear you, but I I I guess. My point is, at some point, this will have to be addressed, whether it's this year or in a couple of years, sixty thousand now or it's eighty thousand later. I don't know, but I think it's proven for us means that.
And and having it in pockets is a good thing, and and I think Amy characterizes it really well, we've got to keep an eye on the enrollment projections. Every year we talk about it here, every year we present it to you, you have to keep an eye on, we have to keep an eye on. And it gets more accurate as they get more trends as they do it. Um so I think that that standard of keeping an eye on it right now, but you're you're right, in two or three years, it might be, wow. Um we we, you know, all of a sudden, the increase is doubled. Expectation, so eight kids now with sixteen a year, and then we have to look. Um but this is for the seventh and eighth grade. Um this Roger facilitated this with Vanwell, with DEW. Um with the boner, actually the pre-bond civil engine firm, I think name is. Yeah, um so this is what it would take um. To do it. Up to, the warrant will be up to.
I I'm all for presenting this and. Background, but given eight, one or six, six. I don't, I don't see that flying.
That's fair.
Given the environment, I just. I I just don't see people.
In.
You could wait, I mean, it's really up to. See you guys to debate and talk about that. Two is sharing this with the community and saying, you've chosen not to put it on this year, but we are planning for next year. Or, you know, depending on on um what you come in at with your budget, so this is a. A, you know, larger increase this year, so sometimes them knowing it might be coming down the the pipe.
Could, could we also not potentially look at pausing? The fifty thousand dollar ask into our facilities fund?
Yeah, that's not, that's on there.
Yep, you can.
Yeah, but pausing that. Holding that because that's fifty thousand and that's sixty thousand, we, if you go back to that slide with the funding plan, I mean, we're all right right now. Right? I mean, if we we don't put in.
Down to sixty-six at the end of this year.
Yeah, yeah, but still, I mean. There's the next anticipated spend is in FY twenty-eight.
You're at a savings time, you're not spending time.
Right, so I mean, if we had to pause a year and say, let's prioritize. Fifty-ish year thousand, right, up to sixty thousand, I would prioritize that, looking at the. Timing of the Amherst projects, I think that would be the more prudent ask, and I would definitely make that clear to the community. If, I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but I feel pretty strongly about that.
The only thing that I would just add, Roger um wants a certain level of funds. Accessible, and I don't know, sixty-six covers that it made here.
Ask that, like the catastrophic. Full boiler failure or tank leak, you know, what is that cost?
He's been a hundred per building.
Yeah.
Um everywhere else. Um so maybe it's a twenty-five thousand dollar ask.
Will we check in with Roger? Our options here, that might be something that we could give a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, um I bet you he says a hundred, and I bet you he says.
I get it.
But he serves at the pleasure. All right, serve at the pleasure of him some bit.
Fourteen percent. What is that?
Just to make sure we have an outfit, if if some of the costs went over.
Yeah. All right, so this is just a synopsis of all of the. Um cost asks that we were talking about, so the operating budget. Uh and the change from FY twenty-three to twenty-four. Um the. Property maintenance funds, which um you know, obviously discuss more, we'll get more information from Roger on his. Uh comfort level, the student with disabilities fund, the fifty thousand, the health insurance. Uh the new fund for fifteen, and then the seventh and eighth grade relocation, sorry, WA warrant article. Um for sixty thousand, so it's a total. Difference in ask, if we were to do all of this, uh six hundred and two, six forty-seven. And the the source of funding. Uh is for the property maintenance, the disabilities fund and the health insurance, the source of funding that we're recommending is unassigned fund balance. And the other two are uh raised through taxation. And then just the review process, so this is draft one that you have. Um sadly, there's no Mont Vernon Budget Committee. Um but we do have those review meetings set up, and I know last year. Um we touched base with board members, and you can decide if you wanna. Come in and meet with staff, or if you want to zoom in. Um we also have the question submission form that I'm just gonna. Briefly show you the the budget file, it's very similar to the SAU file. So that will open up tomorrow. So any questions you have, you can uh submit, and we've been pretty fast in getting responses, so. Uh there's four live budgets now, but but we're working hard to to stay on on top of it. Draft two will be presented at the December board meeting. And we'll have um information on revenue projections, and we'll do some more work on some of the items we spoke about. Uh draft three is uh you have a a a meeting. Before the public hearing, uh January fifth, so we can do a final draft presentation and prepare for public hearing. And um you know, I'll have this slideshow, but uh refined a bit and additional items on revenue for you all to. Make recommendations, the public hearing is January eleventh. Delivery is February eighth, and voting is last fourteen. Oh, look at that. Thank you. So Christine, can you just share the the budget file? Do I have that? You should.
Question for everybody. I'm gonna be traveling away in Florida on that twelve, one, the great, Sarah, but.
Yeah.
I don't know. What the flexibility of other board members and and you folks are either. Go. Monday or Tuesday of that week. Or Monday, Tuesday, following, because I I'd like to be here for the round two of the budget, but if not. I could probably owl in from Florida, if I had to.
We can always.
Yeah, I'll I'll work with Sarah first. I don't know whether there's other meetings.
So this is the um budget file, it looks like the SAU budget, so on this first page. Right up on the top, there's the question submission form, so if you click on that, that'll bring you right to the um the form, and then this just tells what all the. Other items are. In the file, this presentation that I just gave tonight is also linked in here, so you can click right. On that, yeah, right there, so that's there. Um and then it's the, you can just go to the bottom, Christine, click on the tabs.
Yeah.
So. Yeah. You want me to go to certain pages?
Just just click on, just so folks can see, yeah, that's just the test of the questions and answers. And then there's the full budget. If you want, the FY twenty-three budget draft one. And then, and there's calculations from. Year to year, there's a three-year average, there's. FY twenty-three voted to draft and proposed everything I could think of that you would wanna look at. Um and then there's a separate tab for each of what we would have had for subsidies, but it's a. Nice way to break up the data, so it's a little bit more manageable. Um. There's a personnel tab, and that has all the the people. In there with all of their their benefits. There's the categories chart that was in the slide presentation, you can just see the backup data. Want to go to default calculations, it just shows the. Um at the bottom, there's totals and the percentages, but all all line up with what was in the presentation. Budget assumptions. Um yeah, account code elements, if you wonder what things are.
Everything you want.
Everything you want.
I mean, it really is so comprehensive.
Yeah, it's brilliant.
Go to enrollment. That's the chart, and then it has the actual data. Um. Summary graph. And then the warrant, so yeah, so it's hopefully all there, so what we're doing, like what we did for um. Uh SEU and as a draft two, I'll have. You know, a comparison, so you'll be able to see what the changes were. Um and then I'll update the tabs with the latest information, so. Yeah, I'm hoping this is a little more user-friendly and um easier to manage and. So. That's great, yeah.
I think we have a homework, I feel.
Yeah.
Amy, I'll take in on some of the revenue stuff, some of the tuition stuff.
Yeah.
Um and so I think we've got our homework.
And we'll keep those meetings, and maybe I'll just reach out to. Each of you individually on how you wanna handle um the budget meetings, but. We, there's a Zoom already set up, so. Yeah, that's fine, and we already have the staff that are, sorry, that are invited. So, you know, if that's easier for folks, we're happy to to do it that way, so we can ask questions and. Get more information. So thank you.
Thank you. Um I feel like we've already had our little discussion about the. With the direction.
I mean, before next week, we should. Work to leave it in visually kind of. You know, what we think is the number one priority and what level of funding we want on those unassigned fund. Come up with a list and a number and. What?
Assign them homework as well. I I think that's a great idea. Uh we are up to our co-curricular proposals this evening.
So I think we are actually good on those because um. If you recall, we had sort of preemptively discussed that they would be on this agenda, however, it was a voice pleasure. For those last month, which we did, so I think we're outside.
I looked at the action item in the last minute, I didn't see gaming. But I thought we approved it, I thought we did it as a gaming, but I didn't see it in the action item.
So I had asked Abby, I said, isn't this the same one? And she said, no, it was the mural. Yeah, one was the mural club, and one was. I had it in my notes that we. Didn't know, but.
Yeah, and so did I, but when I wrote a board notes, I went back, looked at the action item, and then I, actually, I think I slapped Tom too. But it's, but I think we already did it, and we can go back and check the tape.
Easily just re approve, re approve it.
That's the same proposal that was.
So, yeah, sure, can we have a motion to re approve the. Uh. Co-curricular activity proposals for the game club and Spanish club?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks so much, any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor? Thank you.
Grazie, thank you.
Um next up is um the request to rescind policy E E A dash R. Um it is a. Bus um. Behavior, bus behavior and rules kind of thing, um it was withdrawn by the NHSBA. Um these things are covered in other policies and are actually more procedural and like handbook type of. Information, so it's redundant, so we are actually the only district that still has it on the books. Um I think we were the only one that had it, so the request is to just rescind it for um. Consistency. The community questions, you wanna make a motion to rescind, now see E E A dash R.
I don't like being the only school instructor, so.
That's too long, it's like live pages.
Okay, thanks, any discussion on that?
No.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Uh we have public input to of two. No, no public input this evening, other than you guys are impressive. No, we think you all are impressive. I think, do we need a non-public this evening?
It's up to you.
Did we wanna? Dig in on the um. Increase in the.
Especially. To you, if you do. Um what we can do next time is totally up to you.
I mean, it's not much we can do, but. So. I'm fine.
Thank you.
Next time we feel there's an evening, we can always revisit it.
Sure can.
Right now, it's.
Okay, so um. We can have, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I will make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, uh meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-eight, thank you.